Andy, read the roll.
Andrew's here. Here.
Present.
Present. President.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Dieter.
Present.
And councilmember Ross called in. So we have eight present. You have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the July 11th, 2011 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. (cough) Excuse me. Signed Derek Dieter, David Varner.
Motion to the committee to accept this bill.
Second? Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Under Special Business, I will then turn it over to Dr. David Varner.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of folks, I suppose, are here this evening because of the proposal on animal control. As a result of a proposal from Humane Society, which allows us to put specific numbers and begin to talk about facts rather than about conjecture with regards to what cost might or might not be, I've asked that this be continued until the 22nd when we can work out the proposal and see what it is. I appreciate everyone's interest in animal control, whichever side you find yourself on, and I think that by having a full and complete discussion, we'll be able to get better conclusion than if we just continue to toss abstract numbers back and forth, which is what's been going on for the last several weeks. So with that, can I make that request at this point in time? We request the committee meeting to be continued until the 22nd.
So move.
If that's appropriate at this point in time, we can do that here.
Takes the majority of the council to do that.
Okay, so you have a motion?
I have a motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay. August.
Of August.
August. If there could possibly be an announcement on Miracle Park, if anyone's here for that.
Are you making an announcement or are the ones that have been continued?
Bill 4111, which is the appropriation of $1 million for Miracle Park, has also been requested to be continued until August 8th. So if anyone is here for that, that will also not be heard this evening.
Also, you want to do the other two while you're there?
Yeah.
Also, 4311 will be continued to 8/8, and 1811 will be continued to 8/22.
Any motion to those?
No, we'll do those at the regular time.
Right, under Reports of City Offices. You can have a motion resolved in committee of the whole.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. He hasn't sit where I am, doesn't stand. Thanks.
Yes. Can somebody else bring up their motion?
I'm sorry.
I'll make it.
Thank you.
Just for purposes of the public that are here, anything that is already on the agenda that has been continued, you will not have the opportunity to speak tonight. So we are giving you the courtesy of letting you know early in case you would rather go somewhere else. But August 22nd.
Do a pause for a second.
Can you not close that door right after that, Edwards? The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council sits as the committee. Proposed ordinance are read by the title only by the clerk, John Vorty. Reports are then verbally given to the chairperson of the council, standing committee, to which the proposed ordinance was sent for advisory review and recommendation. If proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member of area plan will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation of the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report and then the formal presentation followed by a public hearing. There are, well, there are not. There used to be agendas out there, but even before. So now I ask City Clerk John Vorty to read Bill 4011.
4311.
4311, but isn't that being continued?
Yeah. We have to draw the motion for the continuance. Yeah. I need to read 4311, they just need to make a motion to continue.
Um, but, well, somebody's... 23?
We have a request that...
4311?
4311 be continued till 8/22.
No, uh, this one, the petition was not...
So we don't have to read that, do we?
No.
Okay, and 1811, we don't have to read either, do we?
There's a motion to continue 1811 to 8/22.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. It is then carried. Okay, now Mr. Vorty can read 4011.
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating $1,200,000 for capital investment in the Potawatomi Conservatory in 2011.
Thank you. Our presenter? We have a committee report, thank you first. I think it's Mr. LaFatte.
Let's see, earlier this afternoon, we had a meeting of the Personal Finance Committee. We heard of Bill 4011, had public hearing. At that time, the committee voted to send this to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, my name is Steve Licking, mayor of the city of South Bend. Office is on the 48th floor of this building. We are asking for an appropriation of $1.2 million to rehabilitate our Potawatomi Conservatory and greenhouse in Potawatomi Park. This is long needed. Discussions have begun on this several years ago, and I'm asking Park Superintendent Phil St. Clair to come up and speak to the details of this appropriation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dan Blair.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Phil St. Clair, I'm the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. My office is at 321 East Wall Street in South Bend. Just to repeat a little bit about what we talked about earlier today, the, what we're looking at out of the conservatories is rehabilitation of the existing three conservatories. The first portion of the conservatory was built in 1963, thanks to the generous donation of the Ella Morris family. It was filed in '67 by another piece of the extension of the conservatory by the Meisel Ellison family, and third, the Arizona Dome that was built in 1973 is the third piece of the conservatory. The proposal here is to look at a couple of things. One is to take down the existing growing house that was built in the 1920s. It is no longer functionable. It's actually unsafe to really be in there to do any provocation right now because of the condition of some of the 90-year-old plus frame. It holds some of the glass in there, and the heating system is antiquated and not properly functioning, and certainly not efficient enough to be using. What we're proposing with Million Two is to invest in the infrastructure of the conservatories that were subgraciously donated almost 50 years ago by several families in South Bend. We feel that as a department and a state entity, that we owe it to the community and to these generous families to maintain the facilities and upgrade them so that they can provide the same type of enjoyment and use that they have for the past 50 years. We know that without doing the upgrades to the conservatories, it will ultimately end up because they'll, won't be long before they'll be in the same situation that the growing house is in right now. So just asking the council for a favorable vote tonight regarding the passage of the funds, so we may put that into the conservatories.
Thank you. Are there any questions and comments for either one of our presenters, Mr. Mayor or Phil St. Clair, at this time, from the council?
Sure, really quick. Phil, who do we use or who consult, who do we consult with about the conditions of our building? Do we use code enforcement or do we use the building department?
The condition of the conservatory, we worked with Greg Kiel Architecture and also Tom Keller Engineering.
Do they inspect all the other buildings that you had mentioned in terms of that may have concerns that would be coming up, or is there another request you would look to for that opinion?
Yes, we've used some other engineers and architects for some of the other facilities.
Any other questions, comments from, yes?
Just have one, Phil. In terms of a timeline, what would be the timeline if we win Bill 4011 passed this evening?
That's an excellent question, and the critical piece of this whole project is the timeline. If we have this approved, it takes a certain amount of time to get it through the part board in terms of the bids that require to do the work, and we would certainly like to get the heating portion, which would mean that we have to demolition the existing growing house. We got to take that down to get access to the heating system and have a new system in place before the weather gets too cold this winter. And so, right now, we're at a critical time, as far as our timeline goes, to try to have the heating system in before it gets too cold.
Seen, any other questions at this time? Seeing none here and then, thank you. At this time, you now both run up with the questions. For those who would like to speak in favor of Bill 4011, please come to the mic and share your thoughts. Bill 4011. And if all of you are coming up, as many of you can line up would be great, and we just line up and we hear each other, please state your name and your address, and then present your case.
Committee, Chairman, please, real quick.
Yes?
There's a lot of noise in the hallway that I'm hearing, feedback. Could we have Sergeant Aron or someone to clear the hallway out for us, please? I can handle it.
Okay. Sergeant Aron, take care of that matter, please. Thank you so kindly. Okay, thank you, Mel. You have to make a seat.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Feeny. I am representing Kiel Architecture and Planning, the architecture firm on the Potawatomi project. Our office is located at 1126 Lincoln Way East, here in South Bend. Just wanted to give kind of an overview of what Phil had talked about already of the scope of the project, of what we're looking at. As he had said, we're looking to remove the existing growing greenhouses and provide a new connection to the, to the conservatories with a new vestibule, a new entry, a drive, and parking. There's not a lot of parking and stuff out there currently, and to redo and to try to make a connection in with the community gardens and Kids Kingdom and the park and the zoo, trying to connect that area a little bit better. The proposed addition is 50 feet by 32 feet and includes handicap accessible restrooms, a potty room, and mechanical support for the entire facility. With that being said, as Phil had talked about, in order to get the mechanical systems to work correctly, the existing growing greenhouses have to come down in order to run the mechanical systems and stuff through that area. I do know that a grant for the electrical upgrades have already been secured for the project, and they will help facilitate new lighting and power throughout the building for the numerous events and stuff that have been coming up. I know that it has greatly increased in the number of people that have come through the building, and that there are scheduling more and more events and meetings and stuff like that at this time. There are currently computer servers from the University of Notre Dame that are on-site that are providing supplemental heat to the building. At this time, we don't have a commitment necessarily from Notre Dame to continue to, we have looked at building a larger server system out there, and that is still a possibility that we might be able to do that at a future time, but, let's see. And earlier, or at the end of this last year, we had installed new high-efficiency gas unit heaters and stuff within the building, and also accepted a donation from Zoo Fans that provided six fans to help circulate the air within the building to help kind of bring things, the hot air up, bring it back down through, so that we can get a little bit more better comfort level and stuff within the building. But I have worked with the Parks Department and then with the Botanical Society through this project, it's been a number of years now, and I really feel that the upgrades are necessary and that it will be, continue to be a great place for everyone in the community to enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Next presenter, I'm on speaker.
Hi, I'm Heidi Gray, 517 Buss Street Street, the manager of the conservatories, and I do want to support this bill. I hope for your vote positively. Yes, our attendance has increased due to some offerings of new classes and events. We have a lot more visitation, new visitors that have never been there before. We have a lot of returning visitors that have been there in many years and are just returning because of all the wonderful memories that they've had. And I just want to make a point that 2013 will be the 50th anniversary of the Ella Morris Conservatory, and with all these upgrades, what a fitting tribute to the conservatories, to the families that gave these gifts to the city if these upgrades are put in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathryn Haas Stettler, 708 North St. Joseph Street. I am the treasurer for the Botanical Society of South Bend, and in addition to the increase of attendance and the increased use of the conservatories for events, we've been booking weddings even until the, into the fall of 2012 already, which is really encouraging. There is a broad base of support for the conservatories in the community, and just this one, one area that I want to draw your attention to, to show you the broad base, is the replacement of this AstroTurf stuff that's in the Meisel-Ellison in the lower level has been the, we're going to be replacing that with bricks, and we have received donations of the bricks and the, from both the Brick Company and Old Fort. We have received donations of the shipping costs from Questers. We were the recipients of the downtown South Bend Rotary Club's $10,000 annual philanthropic award for the installation of those bricks, and then along with a very generous donation from Fagley Landscaping to install these bricks properly so that they will be more conducive to a better quality of the air. They won't be trapping moisture, they won't be trapping mold and mildew like this AstroTurf stuff. It's really going to improve the health of both the collection and the people that work around them, and it will be, just make this venue just drop dead gorgeous, and I'm just so excited about this. But this is just one small piece. This overall Million Two is going to take care of the envelope of the building while the community themselves takes care of some of the smaller things that need to be done but are very necessary, and I think it does show that the people of South Bend are behind these conservatories and would really like to see them maintained. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Linking, 802 South Wall Street. I've been going to the conservatory since 1947 when my family moved to South Bend, and when I heard several years ago that it was endangered, I joined the Botanical Society, and I've been a member for four and a half years. And we've come a long way, but we have a long way to go yet, and I think once we get the new pavers and some of the other improvements and the electrical system fixed, it will be a wonderful venue for, to run out for parties and weddings and all kinds of things, and I think that eventually we can make it a real destination for people coming into South Bend to visit along with our zoo.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jan Maitolik, I'm secretary of the Botanical Society, and I remember speaking to the common council about six years ago about the future of the Potawatomi greenhouses that we now refer to as the Ella Morris Meisel-Ellison conservatories. That, then it was because their closure was imminent, and many people in the community were very concerned. Thanks to the decisions of this council, I'm happy to say things are still up and running. We have an active botanical society that is successfully working in a partnership with the parks in the city. There are activities, as you've heard, taking place in the conservatories on a regular basis, and attendance has been good. I'm here tonight to ask this council to continue to show their support for the conservatives, conservatories now and in the future, so this partnership can continue, and the people of this community can enjoy this treasure. Some, many, some may wonder at this time of financial difficulty, why we want to spend money on something like this. I believe it's because of its uniqueness. Where else can you go to see the beauty, feel the peacefulness, and smell the aroma of plants all year round? It's a special place for people to remember from young childhoods, a place they want to share with future generations. It's also a gift that was given to, to us to care for and keep. If we don't respect what has been given to us, why would anyone else want to donate to this community? The educational opportunities from these facilities are endless, and it's truly an irreplaceable treasure. We've been given a wonderful gift, let's treat it respectfully, enjoy its beauty. Thank you for your support in the past, and I look forward to your support now and in the future.
Thank you.
I'm Tony Trinka, I live at 139 Camden Street, and I have never been to these conservatories. I've driven by them a bunch of times and always look forward to the day when I do actually go into them and enjoy them, because I think they're beautiful from the outside, it's unique, it's kind of like I've lived in this country all my life, never seen the Grand Canyon, but I do intend to go. One of these days, I will go, and I, and I hope they're there, and I think 1.2 million, it seems to be a pretty popular figure, but that, that seems like a heck of a deal to me, to, for as much as they got on the, on their plate, it sounds like a pretty good price, and I, and I would ask for your support.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor? Seeing none here and then, those who like to speak in opposition, please now rise and come and state your name and address.
My name is Greg Murkowski. I currently reside in Hatt for the last 11 years at 2015 Roosevelt Road, Centertownship, South Bend. Formerly, I lived at 915 South 21st Street, which is about more than 200 feet from these conservatories. While I would like to see the city keep them and maintain them, I have several reservations about this particular bill. For one thing, for the type of structures we're talking about here, I think the heating system they're using is probably pretty doggone inefficient. I don't know why they haven't thought about geothermal or something like that, it would be a lot more efficient. Secondly, I would like to know why, for the last 50 years, have these buildings been neglected and not maintained? We wouldn't be near much of a bind as far as having to put the money into these buildings had they been maintained from the get-go, but it seems, for some reason, over the last 50 years, they've been neglected. I watched them for the 13 years I lived on 21st Street gradually deteriorate, and I went there and voted every election. So I have been in them, and they are a treasure. And to the lady that would say, where else can you go and see a facility that has this, I'd suggest Fort Wayne, they have a beautiful botanical gardens down there, and I would love to see something like that in South Bend. I know we can't afford it, and I don't, I don't think we can afford to throw 1.2 million dollars at this one right now, all of a sudden, but we do need to do something to maintain these facilities, get them up to standards, and I think all of the people that have been responsible for the maintenance of these structures and the preservation of these structures, not just this administration, but the past five or six administrations, should be held accountable. We can't keep taking care of our assets like this, then turn around when everything's all kaput and ask for massive expenditures to redo them. A little bit spent each year would go a long way, so therefore, I think this bill needs to be withdrawn. We need to serious look, seriously look at what we want to put into these structures, what we want to use these structures for, and what is the most efficient way to take care of these conservatories and to market them and to use them and to get the full use out of them. Yes, having conventions or receptions, there's a great idea. They do that to botanical gardens in Fort Wayne all the time, but I, I have reservations about economies of scale, this is the most efficient way to go. I think maybe more study should be done on this before we fork over a million, $2, and maybe we could even defer this decision for the next administration. I mean, after all, this administration only has five more months. This may be contrary to what the plans that a Mayor Curry or Mayor Buttigieg may want to lead the city in, and I think possibly it would be a good idea to put this off. They're not going to fall in over the next six months, but I think it would be a good idea just to hold off and take what donations we can get, use them wisely, but hold off on the overall 1.2 million dollar expenditure, and let's see what the next administration wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak in opposition, please come forth at this time. Seeing none here and then, we now allow for the petitioners to make rebuttal to their opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Steve Licking, mayor of the city of South Bend. As you've heard, there is significant work done by the Botanical Society in terms of programming for operating of these facilities. We think it's a great investment. We also feel this is an appropriate investment on our part to recognize the significant donations that have been made over the years. There have been dollars invested over the years to do minor repairs to the facilities, clearly not, not as much as we may have liked in the past, but at some point, when you're dealing with 50-year-old structures, there is some major work that needs to be done. We did look at geothermal heating as a possible option. That would have significantly increased the costs. We believe that with the heating system we're using and with the supplemental heat from the research computers from Notre Dame, that we will have an efficient system that will be positive for the greenhouses and reduce our costs of operation and maintenance as we move forward.
Thank you. This time, we'll bring it back to the council for a recommendation from the chairman.
Sure, there's some unreadiness.
Okay, is there some unreadiness to go with councilmen?
Sure. One. Well, let me, um, just really quick, you were talking about financial contributions that have been made, do we have a dollar amount of financial contributions for our donations? And the other thing is, are there any ongoing fundraising efforts that are happening with this particular facility?
Phil St. Clair, again, 321 Wall Street. As far as contributions go and grants, Kathryn, do you have a number I can use so I'm not being correct?
You can come up to them, um, come up to them.
I want to give a number that's incorrect, and I know that Kathryn and I, you've been working on this, as far as grants and donations.
Kathryn Haas Stettler, treasurer for the Botanical Society. We have a Meisel-Ellison grant from two years ago for $60,000 for the upgrade of the electrical system within the conservatories. We have received small donations for upgrades in the fountains and pumps and various things that we're totaling, like $500, $1,000 here and there, and then this year, we have about $25,000 actually totaling grants in-kind work for the replacement of that AstroTurf and the Meisel-Ellison. So right now, outstanding, there's about $85,000, I would say, plus the smaller grants would total probably around $100,000. Now, that's just recently. Initially, I believe we had over $132,000 for the repair of the glass, the curved glass in the Arizona Dome and in the Meisel-Ellison from Glass House Builders and Restoration that specialized in the Lord &amp; Burnham-type conservatories that we're dealing with. The greenhouses, the growing houses, the things that are kind of falling apart, that are like sieves, that are to the east of the conservatories, are not what we've been putting the money into because they are just... putting the money into, because they are just, they've fallen into disrepair and they just can't be repaired.
Okay. Well, you know, I was trying to get at is looking at how the rest of your fundraising efforts have been over the past, you know, several years, because obviously, this building has not had any attention for the last 50 years that it's been on the property. And I was just really looking at how much, you know, attention has the Botanical Society has paid attention to those things and started fundraising efforts to correct some of the problems and issues that were ongoing in this particular facility. So that was my initial question. My other question, I think I have to direct it with the administration, because it's coming out of the court funds, am I correct? Is this coming out of court?
Yes, this is a penalty option income tax dollars that are being requested to be appropriated.
Great, and it's going to be a significant amount of money that's being spent. How are we, when is this going out for bid?
As soon as we can.
If the council approves this funding, we'd like to go out for bid, as always, our next park board meeting, which is the third Monday of the month.
Okay, is there any opportunity that we can attach some project labor agreements to this particular facility, or this project that's going to happen?
Can we attach a labor agreement?
Yeah.
Well, we'll follow all the state and local ordinances if they're necessary to, wouldn't we approach to getting a contract for this? I understand your answer correctly, your question correctly.
Well, you know, traditionally, we have issues with, you know, making sure that we have local or enough local workers on certain projects, and as a way of trying to make sure that we have enough present, project labor agreement usually is something that we ask for, or I've asked for in the past, to make sure we have a certain percentage, to make sure that the local workers have a chance of actually working on this particular project. In the past, it's been approximately maybe 21, 22% or maybe 20%, somewhere in that area. And that's my question, because I want to like to know that, and actually, if there was a way that we could increase the percentage, you know, I would be more in favor of this project.
Well, I can't speak for other departments, but historically, park projects have been done by labor groups here in town, local contractors and construction groups.
Sure, but this is coming out of court, so are you bidding out the park department?
Yes, coming out of the park board, yes.
The park board?
Yes. And just to note, as far as, it's not doing any work on the facility, we have done work at the greenhouse conservatories over the years, we've replaced boilers and water lines and steam systems, we've done glass repair, we've done work there, it's not like we haven't done anything.
Well, no, that's not my asking. We can get some local labors, while you're just a local subcontractor that participates on this building project, and you said it already, and so, I've looked over your records as well with the park department, and looking at who you're bidding your jobs out to, so I, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Abizela?
Thank you. In the 70s, when I had young children, we used to come to the conservatory quite often, and it was beautiful. And now I know why, because it was new, mostly. I didn't realize that then. And as the years went by and it got more difficult to keep it up, and we kind of got caught in a catch 22, where less people were coming and the conservatory was kind of going downhill. And so, when we, it became, there was a danger that we would lose it. About three, four years ago, the Botanical Society all of a sudden came together and has done just wondrous work, I mean, hours and hours and hours of free labor and study in the conservatory. And I would just like to congratulate them and thank them very sincerely for all the work they've done to make it possible for that facility to live on. And I surely hope we can pass this tonight so that they will know how much we appreciate what they've done, and so our children, my grandchildren will be able to go over there, and my great-grandchildren, maybe. So, anyway, thank you very much for your work.
I'll move for favorable recommendation. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. It is clear. Does the motion continue 4111 to 8811?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
It is clear.
Okay, Mr. Vorten, could you speak to your bill 4411?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating $1 million in infrastructure investment of additional street paving and installation of a traffic signal required for efficient traffic flow in 2011.
Thank you. We have our presenter, Mr. Mayor. We have a committee report first, that would probably be Mr. Dr. Varnah.
The public works property vacation committee had a hearing on bill 4411 this afternoon, and it comes to council for favorable recommendations.
Thank you. Now, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Steve Lickemare of the city of South Bend, with the offices on the 14th floor. We are asking for your appropriation of $1 million to enhance our paving program in 2011, as well as to have dollars to install a traffic signal near the new CROC Center, so that as there are major events there, we will have safe flow of traffic, egress and ingress for that property. I've asked Gary Gillett, Director of Public Works, to speak more to the details of this bill.
Thank you. Mr. Gillett.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary Gillett, Public Works Director, offices on the 13th floor of this building. I provided a handout at your earlier committee meeting, I'll just highlight that. It depicted the distribution of paving over the last decade, showing rather uniform coverage north to south, east to west of the city of South Bend, and then over about a decade, we paved nearly half the streets in the city. This year, the common council has already appropriated $2.1 million for paving on our 500-mile-plus of city streets, and that's a level that's sufficient to break even. The amount of investment in the streets offsets the amount of annual decay and the condition of the streets. And what this appropriation will do is allow us to raise the level, the condition of the streets. Our proposal is to invest $850,000 on mostly arterial or business, commercial-type streets, some in residential areas, but going for the higher-traffic-volume streets to get the most wear and tear and the most axle loads from trucks. So with $850,000, we can address community and city plan goals of transportation, infrastructure support, urban design, and economic development by putting these important elements of our transportation network in good shape. People use these roads every day to get from where they live to where they work and around to visit folks, and they're important for safety and they're important for the local economy to move goods and services. I recommend your favorable action on this, and that concludes my remarks unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from the council, from Mr. Gillett, or the mayor this time?
Just for the record, Gary, that first $2.3 million was local road and streets and motor vehicle highway?
Yes, actually, all the materials, I think, were funded out of motor vehicle highway. We used local road and street for some match money to get federal funds back. And I did skip over the signal. The signal is for the intersection of Western and Laurel, and that will facilitate ingress, egress for major events at the CROC Center. We talked about how will we control that signal? We might let it rest on green until loops or cameras would actuate, traffic needing to come out of the CROC Center or from the parking lots on the north side of Western. It'll also aid pedestrian safety with push-button actuation for that. Or we might put it on a synchronized timing, but at any rate, we will not program it in a manner where it causes congestion on the Western corridor, particularly as close as it is to Chapin. It'll either be actuated or synchronized.
Thank you. At this time, we open it up for the public. Those who would like to speak in favor, please step forth and say your name and address. Seeing none, hearing none, those who would like to speak in opposition, please step forth and say your name and address and present.
My name is Greg Berkowski, 20155 Roosevelt Road again, and I'm all for the road construction money, but we don't need any more of them traffic lights. It's hard enough getting out of South Bend any direction you go. We have a traffic light at Chapin and Western, we'll have one and still have one at Western and Walnut, which is just four blocks to the west. This way, with the proposal, we'll have a traffic light at Western and Chapin, and we'll have a traffic light just two blocks to the west at Laurel and Chapin. There's got to be a better way to get people in and out without sticking another traffic light in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we have closed that out. At Road Works, we have to have a rebuttal from the mayor or Mr. Gillett to discuss that issue.
Thank you, Steve Lickemare of the city of South Bend. We believe that the location of the traffic signal here is appropriate, as Mr. Gillett has said, we will time it so that it does not impede traffic, but it allows safe ingress and egress from this marvelous new facility. We'll also provide a pedestrian safety component with the push-button signals for walks so that individuals who may have parked across the street can safely cross there as well. So we again ask for your favorable consideration of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, we now move back to the council for any comments or for a motion. favorable recommendations?
Yeah, real quick, the light will be on what corner of Laurel, and I've confused it. I'm thinking Laurel and Western.
The light will have signal heads that face in four directions, so it will affect north, south, and east-west traffic.
So it'll be a four-way stop right at that corner?
Yes.
Right by the Elks Lodge, right there?
Right at Laurel.
That's not it? I'm missing.
Right at Laurel, and then it goes to the north end of the parking lot. Laurel and Western, four-way intersection.
So it'll be a four-way right there at Laurel and Western, and then another four-way at Chapin and Western?
So again, Councilmember Davis, Laurel is the street immediately west of the CROC property?
No, I know exactly where Laurel is. Between the housing complex.
Well, you mentioned the Elks, and it's not, that's a different cross street, so...
Right near the housing authority? We have a housing authority.
No, I know exactly what you're talking about. Right, right, the newer.
So the south leg will be Laurel, the north leg will actually be an entrance into a parking lot that's being created on the north side of Western there.
Where the billboard is at?
Correct.
So what we're going to know about the access point for that street that's right there, when you cross Wayne North, that brick street is like really, really small, and it's like in real disrepair, and the curves are like extremely high. I didn't really know the depth of this until you said it again, so that's why the lights went on. That street is in like really, really bad condition, very, very bad condition.
Yeah, the north side gets some grade adjustments associated with the parking lot construction and the signal work to smooth out the grade.
To smooth out the?
The grade, the elevation, to make a smooth intersection.
So will it be widened at all? Because sometimes you can only get like one car going through here.
I don't recall the design details of the access, but it'll be reviewed by the city engineer, and it'll be sufficient pavement width to handle the traffic into the parking lots. The main purpose of cars going north, we think, is into the parking.
Because it's a brick street, it's a brick street, right?
I have to look at pine.
Pine, yes. So will that sign be removed, Burkhart?
It's before the BCA for reconfiguration, yes. It won't be removed, it'll be moved, reconstructed?
Well, I understand that, you may go higher on one pole or, you know, because it's like a tripod, it looks like, sort of.
Yeah, I forget what the new design looks like, but it'll be significantly freshened up, modernized, and slightly relocated in that lot.
I'm just really worried about the traffic flow in that area during course of like, you know, 5 o'clock or 3 o'clock in the afternoon, all the school buses that stop, because right now, it's a mess because of the construction projects that are going on, but it's still a mess because of the way Western kind of curves, and it turns into one lane versus two lanes. And I'm really like nervous about the fact that we have a lot of traffic going down toward Main Thoroughfare, and we go from one to two lanes. I specifically remember last summer, I backed and you provided us with that, Gary, with the lanes for people to park their cars outside their businesses, because we talked about how Western Avenue was always supposed to be a one-lane or a two-lane highway going both ways, right? Or one on one side and the other, so it was a two-lane. And so, calling the state and finding out that that was one of the streets that they never took care of past the early, late 1800s, it was like really crazy. But anyhow, based upon that information and looking at what we're at current today, looking at this new intersection that you're putting in place, the traffic control is going to be extremely difficult to navigate. I think that we're going to push people away from that area versus bringing them in. By the way, that you have the Virofs at Walnut, I'm following this down the street now, I'm looking at seeing what's going on.
Thank you for your input. I'll ask the city engineer to look at those design details as he does the intersection work. He looks at the surrounding traffic issues and the corridor progression and the new traffic generators like the CROC Center, and deciding how to do the details of the design. The city engineer by ordinance will manage that installation of that traffic control device.
Because you have one, two, and three lights within like a four-block drive. You have a, now, with this light, you're going to have one at Laurel, you're going to have one at Chapin and Western, and then you're going to have another one at Alonzo Park, Alonzo Watson Drive, am I correct? And then you're going to have one at Taylor, and then you're going to have one at William, and then you're going to have another one at Lafayette.
Yeah, so we have a grid of signals downtown, every block, and when you get a high occupancy building like the CROC Center, you start to have to control for concentrated vehicular and pedestrian traffic. So it's not unusual that it would be every block when you get a high occupancy vehicle, a high occupancy building. This is a 100,000-square-foot building with major events being programmed there.
I've never seen them in stoplights within a mile in the other cities, and they're a lot larger than ours. I'm just really, I'm nervous, I'm really, really nervous about how this is going to fare for that area over there.
So... Do we have a motion in a second?
Second.
We do. We have a motion in a second. One thing, before we do that, that report, Mr. Gillett, real quick, the information that you plan to get to Councilman Davis, that you decided you can get, you're going to check into the city engineer, can you just send us a little report regarding, what the responses regarding that?
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Before you do that, could I clarify something? Yes. The next street is Laurel, the brick street that Councilman Davis is talking about, and the other, that is Laurel. That is, yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Okay, before I go, just to leave, we do have groups 572 and 562 that are here in the back, they've sat there patiently, we'd like for them to stand, and we give them a big hand for being here. Thank you for coming. And their sponsor, mother, parent, whatever, thank you, appreciate you being here too. Now, I'd like to take a motion to rise and move. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, thank you. The council is now in session, Mr. Vorten, third reading of 4411.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating $1,200,000 for capital investment in the Potawatomi Conservatory in 2011.
Move the passage to 4411.
Second.
Move motion to second, Vorten, roll.
Mr. Henry Davis. Mr. LaFaut. Mrs. Pizzella. Dr. Varnah. Vice President Oliver Davis. Mr. Kursitz.
Aye.
Dieter. Aye.
Aye. This is third on 4411. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating $1 million...
one million dollars in infrastructure investment of additional street paving and installation of a traffic signal required for efficient traffic flow in twenty-eleven.
Move the passage to forty-four eleven.
Second. Motion to second, Mr. Vorty.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Kursitz.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Um, because of this bill being structured the way it is, I'm in favor of the paving, this repaving that's going to have to happen, these things that are necessary, but I'm just like really concerned about the way that the lights are going to go off, so I'm not in favor of other projects because of that particular, uh, that situation. So my vote is nay.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Have a motion to strike eleven forty-four on behalf of the petitioner?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Mr. Vorty, eleven forty-eight, please.
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as forty-four eleven Quality Drive as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a six-year real property tax abatement for GVW Realty LLC.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, uh, President Dieter, members of the council. My name is Rich Deal from Barnes &amp; Thornburg with offices at one hundred North Michigan Street here in South Bend. I'm pleased to join Wes Yoder, the general manager of Premier Bandag, to describe this new building project and to kindly request your consideration for confirming resolution on property tax abatement. For a little bit of background, at this site on Quality Drive is currently located a forty thousand square foot facility owned by GVW Realty. That forty thousand square feet is leased to an affiliate, uh, by the name of Best One Tire. Best One is engaged in the retail sale and service of commercial truck, bus, and other large tires. Uh, as part of their servicing of fleet vehicles, uh, they do a lot of business with, uh, an affiliate called Premier Bandag, uh, currently located in Mishawaka. As part of this proposed project, GVW is proposing to invest, uh, approximately one point five million to nearly double the size of the facility on Quality Drive to facilitate the relocation of Premier Bandag from Mishawaka into South Bend. This will bring with it fifteen full-time and one part-time job, uh, representing payroll of over, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand. And as part of aligning or putting Premier Bandag next door to Best One Tire, uh, this will allow, uh, both operations to increase their efficiency and, uh, overall service to, uh, to their, to their customers. As part of this, the, uh, uh, overall taxes to be abated over the six-year period are roughly a hundred and fifty thousand, the taxes to be paid during that same, uh, six-year period are roughly a hundred and fifty thousand, in addition to three hundred thousand in taxes that are paid on the, uh, the, the current existing facility on Quality Drive. We'd be happy to answer any questions and would appreciate your, your support.
All right, thank you very much.
There's a quick question. Was, uh, was Best One Tire once GVW Tire that went down?
Let me ask you.
Was it, that was the former name of it?
Yes, it was.
And, and this site is the site that's been cleared off across from Foreman Real Estate there?
Uh, this is on, on, you know, Quality Drive, um, I think you can see from the photos, the area, uh, that is immediately south of the existing building, uh, is the, uh, is the proposed site for the new, the new building construction.
All right, thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Anyone in opposition? Counsel. Move, uh, clarify. Uh, move for the passage, uh, adoption of forty, I mean, eleven forty-eight?
Second.
Motion and a second, Mr. Vorty.
Mrs. Pizzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Uh, Vice President Oliver Davis. Mr. Kursitz.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. The eleven seventeen's already been continued, first reading of bill forty-five elevens.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to transfer a portion of Vorty Park to Hoosier Tank and Manufacturing, Inc.
Move the bill forty-five eleven, be set for second reading, public hearing, and third reading on eight-eight and sent to the council.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Forty-six eleven, Mr. Vorty.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article Nine, Administration, Section twenty-one dash oh-nine point oh-three, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Article fourteen, subdivisions, Section twenty-one dash fourteen point two oh-four, subdivisions twenty-one dash fourteen point oh-six, subdivision replats, and twenty-one dash fourteen point oh-nine V variances.
Move the, uh, forty-six eleven, go to zoning. Four-eight-eight.
Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Mr. Vorty, forty-seven eleven, please.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article One, Basic Provisions, Section twenty-one dash oh-one dash oh-three, Non-Conforming Lots, Uses, Buildings, Structures, or Signs, and Article Four, Industrial Districts, Section twenty-one dash oh-four point one-one, eleven, General Regulations for Industrial Districts.
Move the forty-seven eleven, go to area plan.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. We have a motion for bill eleven forty-nine.
Move the bill eleven forty-nine, go to zoning application.
Second. On eight-eight eleven. Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, Mr. Vorty, let's go with thirty-five eleven and thirty-six eleven. After we get a motion here, from Dr. Varner, to send us a zoning authorization for eight-eight two.
Second.
Eight-eight.
Eight-eight eleven.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any new business before the council right now? Privilege of the poor, anyone wants to speak to us at this time about something we have not covered this evening, you may step up the podium, we need your name and address. And Councilmember Buddy Alkerson will time you, you have three minutes. Seeing none, here it is.
Okay.